Welcome, everybody. This is the Orlando Sentinel's editorial board interview for candidates for city commission in Apopka, I'm sorry, city council, C4. And we are joined today with by the incumbent Nick Nesta and Eric Mock, who is a member of the city's planning council. Apopka's been growing a lot. It has been for quite a while, the second largest city in Orange County. And there's been a little growing pains. So I'd like, we're going to be talking about those and just getting, giving our readers a chance to hear directly from you on important issues. And I'd like to start off with a question that you've been asked in just about every interview, which is, Apopka is somewhat unusual and it still uses a strong mayor form at the moment. Is it time to change that? And I think we'll start with Mr. Mock.
Thank you, Chris. You know, currently, the strong form of mayor government here in Apopka, it has been in place for many, many years. You can certainly move to a city manager form of government. The real differences in that is the city manager is elected by the commission and the mayor is elected by the residents of Apopka. Irregardless, someone is in charge. You know, someone, you know, holds the last say. If residents don't like the mayor, then they can, you know, come out every four years and vote for someone different as the mayor. And as, as they have done in the last two years, there actually was a recall. The recall was not successful, but you know, all citizens got to participate in the, the voting process, you know, from, from that perspective. If you have a city manager form of government, certainly residents select the commission and then the commission decides. And if the residents don't like it, then they can talk to their commissioners. I'm kind of one, someone's going to be in charge. I'm in favor of the mayor type government. And that's, you know, where I stand at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Nesta. Would you like to, Chris Nesta, would you like to address that?
Absolutely. And I want to thank the Orlando Sentinel for providing this opportunity for us to really kind of give our opinions and where we think and where we see the city going. And so I appreciate you guys taking the time to interview us and take this time. And as a resident of Apopka since 1994, I've gone to school here. I started my business here. I've raised my kids here. They're three-year-old twins now, so they're quite the handful. So I understand the growth that Apopka has experienced as well as the pain points. I understand the great history we have, but also where we can improve. So with all that being said, I think the biggest thing as your current elected official is that I'm elected to represent the voice of the people. I'm here to represent our individuals, the people that put me in place, the people that we represent every single day. And what I'm hearing unequivocally and nonstop is that they want a managerial form of government. So for me, I'm going to do what the residents tell me to do. If that's the voice, that is the echoing voice from every person I've talked to, no problem, that's, that's what I'm going to go for. For me personally, I think we should ease into it. I don't think we should make a quick change from strong mayor to managerial form of government. I think it should slowly get there so that residents don't feel that they've been, it's a knee-jerk reaction. It's something that slowly gets us there. I think that's going to be healthy for everybody to understand a changing and growing Apopka because there are, we are changing. It's just, it's happening, it's coming, and we can't slow it down. So we just, to do it well so that everybody's on board and we can have one accord or resolve, do it slowly. And over a couple of years, we can slowly change power from a strong mayor to a managerial and not do the knee-jerk reaction because I think that's going to be worse for our residents than it is right now.
Okay, well, let me, let me follow up on that then. You know, both of you touched on this, and I think that is something that Apopka residents are very well aware of. This is not often a happy council. There, there are some pretty sharp lines. The division debate has gotten pretty uncomfortable at times and divisive. And it's been that way for a couple of years now. What can the city, what can city leaders do to bring a little more? Or do they need to do anything to bring a little more civility and mutual, mutual respect and accord to city council meetings? And let's start with Commissioner Nesta.
Thank you. Yeah, it's a great question, and it's one that obviously I'm experiencing every meeting that we go to. It's something that, as leaders in the community, we have passion. We have love for our community. We want to see it positively impacted, and we all have different visions in that capacity. So sometimes there does come friction from that, but where friction is, there's fire, and fire just breeds change. And so we do need change. Our city is changing. So there's, we're going to experience that regardless of if we have a strong mayor or a managerial form of government, because that's, a lot of people think that if we get rid of a strong mayor, former government, we get managerial, we're not going to have this type of interaction, basically. But it's still going to happen because if we lose the passion and the drive and the love for our community, and we just want to say nice words instead of actually saying, well, why do you think that way? Why would we do that? Let's keep giving each other a little bit of pressure to make sure that we, we have the right mindset moving forward and that we do have the residents in mind as we go forward. Additionally, too, if we can't stand up for our residents and don't have an opinion on that, we shouldn't be elected. If you're elected, you should have a strong opinion about our residents, what matters to them. There should be strong opinions, and it comes down the way that it does. Friction isn't a bad thing. It really does create great change. And I mean, it's a biblical reference to that, iron sharpens iron, and it does. We can't do that through hugs. It goes through friction. So although there is going to be friction, I don't see that as a bad thing. It's going to continue to be that way as our city grows.
And Mr. Mock?
Thanks, Chris. You know, one of the things in you, so, you know, it's obvious that you've either watched or been involved and seen, you know, Apopka City Council meetings. And there's been at times conversation about discourse, and that discourse is good. If you look up the definition of discourse, there's something that's called healthy discourse. And one of the things, and I've talked about this before, in healthy discourse, you have to have two things. You have to have respect and dignity. If you throw out either one of those words, then you just have discourse. And I think it's important, you can have healthy discourse. Not everyone's going to agree. Not everyone's going to agree with your thought process, your comments, et cetera. But I think if you do, through respectful and dignified manner, you can have a healthy discourse, and that's what I plan on doing to bring to the council.
I have a question real quick for, for both of you, and possibility of a follow-up, but I'll, but I'll begin with this. Very simply, what does smart growth and development look like in Apopka right now and in the future? What do you, what do you plan to do about it to start with? And Mr. Mock, we'll start with you.
Well, one of the things that Apopka has, and I apologize, there's a mower out here. So if you can hear the mower going, I think it'll be for both of us. But, you know, Apopka has, you know, property. And one of the things that happened when the 429 was built through the northwest part of Apopka and the northwest part of Orange County, you're going to have growth. There was land, there was sizable pieces of property out there. And, you know, individuals that have owned those pieces of property for generations, now there's an individual that comes up and makes an offer that's, that's life-changing in that process. And, you know, it just goes through, you know, from, from a, you can't, you know, a landlord or a private landlord, you can't tell them they can't sell their land, you know, to do that. One of the things, I believe, the council and Apopka City Council, Planning Council, with that growth and that development, one of the things that's going to happen is that we really need to look and review the master plan. We need to review the zoning. I think the zoning, you know, currently is a little too broad. And we also need to review the code. There are people that are making presentations of what they'd like the new development to look like, and some of our codes won't allow that. Certainly, we don't want anybody to fail, so I think we need to look at those three things very seriously and have that, quote, "smart growth."
Just a quick follow-up. I think you, you answered this pretty well, but to expand on it for just 30 seconds or so, are there particular areas that, that you feel are especially ripe for redevelopment or for annexation in Apopka? And just, just a real quick answer.
Well, okay. So thanks, Jake. You know, there's been a lot of conversation about redeveloping the downtown area. Of course, out there at the 429 and Kelly Park, there's several large developments that are going in there. They're going to have their growth and development that they're going to have. You know, they're in the city, you know, moving forward, they have a blank slate. So I think those are probably two of the, the locations that have the, the best opportunity. Certainly, you know, the downtown area of, of Apopka right now, we don't have the exact same type of thing that Winter Garden has or, or Park Avenue and Winter Park or, you know, Baldwin Park. But we do have a couple of streets that have small businesses now that could be a nice downtown area.
Great. Thanks very much for that. And Mr. Nesta, we'll sort of start with the same question for you. What does, what does smart growth and development look like for Apopka right now?
Absolutely. And thank you for this question. It's one where obviously we are seeing growth that we've never seen in the city before. I mean, we're annexing properties. We just did one yesterday as well. It's going to be a new development, smaller community, probably 10 homes maybe. But we're seeing incredible growth, and what needs to come with that growth is, to your point, a smart plan. And that smart plan for me is engaging our developers, making sure that they understand what our expectations of them are and what their expectations of us are. What type of services do we need to be providing to the new residents, but also not taking away from our current residents and hurting them in that capacity? So it's really holding our developers' feet to the fire, which they're happy to do as long as we explain what our expectations are. They really are happy to do it. I love working with developers because they'll ask me, Nick, just tell us, what, what do we need to do? And we'll do it. One was, I've been able to negotiate having extra funds for mitigation of flooding issues close to this development. It wasn't the actual development, but close to it. I've had one that I'm working on, trying to get them to build us a new soccer field. It's a new hot one in our area right now, and the city's just not moving quick enough, and developer will. So it's things like that. It's engaging developers in that capacity so that we do have growth, but it doesn't hurt our current residents and our new residents fall in love with the city that the old, just like the old residents did. So it's adding all that together, and, and we can do that, and we're starting to do that more and more, but it's doing that in a more active and specific approach.
And just a, just a quick extra minute. Are there, are there specific neighborhoods or areas that you think that annexation and redevelopment should focus on right now? And just 60 seconds for that.
Absolutely. And so for this one, similar, up in the KPR, Kelly Park Interchange, we actually had to create that. The state said to get the exits on 429, the access point, we had to create the density there. We had to do these massive projects that have a residential area, a employment area, a industrial area. We had to have those to be able to get 429 to put exits in Apopka. So that mold was kind of cast for us years ago to get the access points that we have now. So up there, it's going to be pretty incredible, that project up there. I'm really looking forward to it, to the KPI. And our downtown center has a major thoroughfare going through it. It's never going to be the downtowns that we see around our, our central Florida area. So what we need to do is create little pockets, similar to the Kelly Park Interchange or the KPI. We need to create little pockets of entertainment areas, of walkable areas. Our whole city's not going to be walkable. Our downtown's not going to be walkable. It just isn't. But we can make little pockets that are destination spots, that are walkable, and we need to have that focus and that plan built upfront.
Thank you very much. The next question I'd like to ask is, you know, anybody who's been in Apopka for more than 10 or 15 years knows of the drastic change in the demographics of our community. And one of the things that is becoming an issue for many residents of Apopka is that they can't interact with their leaders because their leaders don't speak Spanish. And, and I'm wondering, what more can the city do to make city government accessible for everybody, including providing services in Spanish and other languages such as Haitian, Creole, that will give people access to the same services that, that everybody else has? And I'll start with Commissioner Nesta.
Great question. It's one that's come up recently. We had a forum last week at the Florida Farm Workers Association here locally, and a very similar question came up is, why don't we have a website? Why, why don't we have our agenda packets translated in multiple languages? So that next day, I went to our IT department and said, what can we do? How do we change this? How do we update this? Because it can't be that hard. Other people are doing this. Other corporations are doing this to engage as many people as possible because they want people to spend at their company. How do we do this as a city to keep our residents engaged? And so our website does have, my IT director showed me, we do have the ability to translate into multiple languages. It's 170 different languages, I think he said, Russian, Creole, Haitian, Spanish, Italian, whatever you'd like, we have that. The problem is, we're not converting our agenda packets, our three, five, 700-page packets every week, to Spanish, to Creole, to Haitian, to what our residents also speak. So we are working on doing that now. I actually just spoke yesterday with our IT director again at our last meeting to say, how can we do this? How can we, how can we engage in that capacity? Because what we also did was for, we wanted to make an accessible website. So it was kind of in that same conversation of, how do we include everybody so that we can get as much feedback as possible, that people can interact with us in a huge capacity on every level? I don't just want people that speak English. I don't want people that, that have whatever ailments, they may not be able to participate. I want all of it. So that's, that's what we're working on, and, and we're going to continue to do that, especially once we're elected. I'm going to continue to engage our residents in that capacity.
Thank you so much. Mr. Mock, same question.
You know, technology now is, can be a wonderful thing, and sometimes it's, I'm sure for the tech people, it's frustrating and challenging to have stuff that's growing. But I think most of us, when we go to a website, I know for certain, I look at certain websites that are from Europe, and the, where you would go pay for the product, you just look up and you can do a little pull-down, and there's a picture of a flag from the country that you're in. You click on that flag and it converts it to your, you know, your currency, you know, so that you know what the currency is and what it costs. Same thing, the, you know, the concept. You could have a little pull-down, you could click on that and instantaneously, whatever that language is that you clicked on, or the little flag that you clicked on, now, now the system communicates, you know, through that, through that language of the, of the reader and the, and the person who's listening. Of course, that takes programming. And so as Mr. Nesta said, the one thing that I would work, work with is the IT department to, okay, you know, let's work, you know, step by step, you know, just let's not do it, you know, everything overnight. Okay, the largest language, then the next largest language, and then, you know, just continue to work forward, you know, through that process. I know, you know, the, the language translators on, on my phone, I've, I've actually interacted with people. They'll text me information. I copy and paste that into a language, you know, translator, and then I type mine and copy and paste it in their language. So technology is much easier than it used to be, and it's more helpful, but I think there's, you know, things that we can do to make it easier.
Yeah, so Apopka is known for some beautiful, your Wildlife Trail and also Kelly Park. I mean, it's really, it's got some beautiful jewels that everybody in the whole region knows, knows about and visits. Do you, do you feel like the, the regulations in place for growth are such that it will protect those? Or do you think anything needs to be strengthened? I'll start with, who do we start with next? Mr. Mock?
I'm not saying that we have everything completely the way that we need to, but I live quite close to Lake Apopka and the Lake Apopka Loop Trail. I'm a cyclist, and I enjoy those tremendously. Was working with the city of Apopka and Bike Walk Central Florida, going through a very extensive work plan to look up, you know, where's the next trail? How do we connect those? I think that ecotourism is a huge part of what can be here in central Florida. Obviously, everybody likes to come to Florida, especially during the winter. And if we connect some of these bike trails and we, you know, close some of the loops of those trails with another loop and another loop, we can have a very extensive bike trail system here. I know that we're real close to the, you know, Cross Florida Trail, and the, at some point, that will be built all the way across Florida. And the municipalities that are within, you know, distance are all trying to connect and make, you know, connections to that. So I think that there is that. I think that as far as regulations, if we see something, we go, you know, we, we look at it seriously, and, and, you know, if we need to make changes or need to make improvements, we do that. I know St. John's Water Management is very diligent at what they do, and everybody follows what St. John's, you know, looks for. So that, that would be my response.
Mr. Nesta?
Great question. And it's, it's one that, as I'm sure you guys probably know, Orange County has a much bigger budget than we do by a couple billion dollars. But what they've been doing, and it's been really advantageous for us here locally, is that they've been buying large plots of land, 40 acres, 20 acres, 30 acres, to save as preserve up here in northwest Orange County, right where the KPI is, where our high density is. So what I would like to do moving forward is engage with them in a higher capacity and see how we can contribute as well to preserving some additional land. Because we are seeing a lot of, obviously, development like we've spoken about. But if we can partner with Orange County on a higher level, if they're willing to spend the money, let's put in some money as well and start protecting more of these lands. There's a lot of development that's trying to destroy some habitats that were supposed to be forever, in perpetuity easements for one, specifically Gopher Tortoises, that is trying to be developed on now. So working to make sure that we preserve what makes Apopka great, which is our outdoors. I mean, the springs is one of them. I have a project coming up, and, and once we're elected, I'm really excited to bring this out, too. It's going to be, I don't want to give it out yet, but I'm really excited about it. It's an asset we already own, but we're not using at all, which blew my mind when I was just out there a week ago. And it's going to be incredible to be something that I don't have to ask permission for. We own it as a city, and we're going to be able to create an entire new park. It's 40 acres. It's going to be gorgeous. I'm so excited about it. And it's things like that. That's what I want, is have our city engaged on it. I don't need the state to tell me what to do. We know that nature needs to be preserved and our plants and flora fauna and animals need to be preserved. Let's just do it correctly, and let's have a plan and make it happen.
Thank you.
My next question is, Apopka does have some surprisingly large employers that people don't realize, but the residential to business mix is not quite advantageous. What more can the city do to attract economic development? And start with Mr. Nesta.
It's a great, great question, and the answer's almost in the question. We just hired, and I was a huge advocate behind Commissioner Becker. It was his, his pet project to get before he, he vacated his seat, to get an economic development department funded and, and somebody in place. And we finally did that about a month ago, a month and a half ago. So we have an economic development director on staff now that has done this for years and is ready to go. And, and what she's doing now is getting kind of a lay of the land, understanding the strengths, the weaknesses, the opportunities, the threats, a SWOT analysis of our city to really see where's our growth potential? What are we needing? What are we missing? We have millions of square feet of industrial warehouse coming in right now on the west side of, of Apopka, close to our airport. And so that's employing a lot of people. It's great. We've got Goya, like you said, Coca-Cola, Amazon, huge employers, but we need different styles of employers. We need different levels of employers as well. So we've got the hospital. We have some of those more professional coming in. One thing that a local municipality does great, Winter Park, they incentivize headquarters to come in, and, and they get the higher net worth individuals of whatever it may be. I know one was, Red Lobster used to be headquartered right here in Winter Park, and that was because they incentivized correctly. And if we do the same thing, and with the leadership of our economic development director, they'll be able to tell us, how do we incentivize the right people to come here? And that's what I want to do, is make sure that we're incentivizing. The other thing, too, with that is stay out of the way of our economic development director. They know what they're doing. I know real estate. They know economic development directing. Do it. Go with it, run it. Tell me what you need to be successful, and let me figure out how to fund it. And that's how we're going to be successful in a city, especially with new employment.
Mr. Mock, same question.
You know, the, the challenge in, in, in your, your question and observation, Chris, you have a, a location, Apopka, that's, you know, essentially was a bedroom community for many years. People lived here and then commuted into a work location outside of Apopka, other than the small businesses that were here. And as time has moved forward, now you start to see more and more businesses growing, you know, certain types of businesses. Certainly, the pandemic drove the warehouse business through the stratosphere. You know, I read some articles several months ago that it seems like all manufacturing, all companies are working really, really hard to have the Amazon model, can we deliver whatever you order within hours? Which then requires having more warehouse space, you know, in closer proximity to, you know, population zones. When people start working there and they're working in those environments, and if they live in that same, you know, location, community, then they're going to be looking for opportunity for shopping, for dining, you know, local. So I think it's kind of a combination of things. As you get enough and you get enough size, businesses come in and say, hey, this is a great place. I can open a restaurant. This is sustainable, you know, back and forth. So it's not only that, you know, do you have quality housing that people can afford? And then do you have quality locations that they can spend their money at?
I wanted to thank you both for joining us. We have actually come pretty close to the time we promised you you'd be done. And before you make a closing statement, I wanted to let our readers know, we will be making an endorsement in this race. However, we want to encourage you to do your own research. There is so much information out there. Look at the candidates' websites to get more directly from them, and talk to your neighbors and friends. And please make sure to come out and vote, because it is so important that Apopka get the pig back from its residents. And early voting is going on right now, and you will have the opportunity to vote also on March 19th. And with that, first, I'd like to invite the two candidates to make a brief closing statement about why they should be the best choice. And let's start with Mr. Mock.
Oh, thank you, Chris, and Julie, and Jay, and the Orlando Sentinel for giving us this opportunity. I want to thank all the viewers and the people that will read this, this interview as well. I've, I've been here, and Apopka ran for the council a couple of years ago, actually against Mr. Nesta. And I have, you know, communicated very clearly, I want to bring a voice of reason, not the voice of reason, a voice of reason back to the city council. You mentioned some of the, the discourse and that type of thing. I see that. I want to bring back a healthy discourse. I want to be respectful, dignified to individuals. You know, out here campaigning, you know, here, early voting, and it's wonderful to see people wave, you know, they thank, you know, all of us. And I enjoy seeing people be involved in the voting process. The, the citizens of Apopka will make a choice for the next four years of, of the type of interaction that they want on the city council. I know that we're going through growing pains. The growing pains are there, but we can still go through those and still hold our head up and still treat people with dignity and respect. I look forward to being your next commissioner, and I ask for your vote, early voting, and on March 19th. Eric Mock, thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Nesta, you get the last word.
Absolutely. No, and I want to thank the Orlando Sentinel. Thank you all for making this happen. Appreciate your time. I know we're getting close to early voting. I mean, we're in an early voting right now, and also Election Day, March 19th. So I appreciate you guys taking the time. I know we're all busy. So thank you so much for giving this platform to us to be able to express how we feel and think and how we want to grow this city. Like I said in my opening statement, I've been here since 1994. I've gone to elementary, middle, high school here. I've gone to UCF for both my undergrad and graduate degrees. I know what it's like growing up here. I know the pain points. I know the historical context of being in Apopka. I also know where we're going. I know the vision I have. I have a strong vision, and so do many others. The city of Apopka is growing, and it's great to see. And we have so much history here that we need to preserve, as well as a lot of green space we can preserve. I want to continue to do that. I've done that in the last two years. I believe in fiscal responsible spending. I don't want I don't want to raise taxes where we don't have to, but I also think we can invest properly moving forward and continue to do that to where we can increase services and not increase taxes. I, I've enjoyed the last two years of being a commissioner and that's why I want to do it again. My family has loved being a part of this city in such a big capacity as well. And I've loved connecting with everybody, uh, continually. And I look forward to, once we're elected, continuing the endeavors that I've done, uh, continuing my, um, my economic, uh, investments that has really made us go so much further than where we used to be. I want to make sure that we continue to move forward. I want to make sure we're making the right decisions for the residents and not for ourselves.